Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the December 7th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Here.
Commissioner Strong. Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Buckle up, we're going. Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. With applications received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with a recommendation to this Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of the community. We're on Agenda Item Number Three, which is Public Statements. We will now receive public statements. This is the time to -- is -- that is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the consent calendar public hearing portions of the agenda. If you're here on Items 5A through 5D, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, we'll move on to Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Agenda Items Number Four. These Agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing item for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion to a-stop staff's recommendations on the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing items?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. This is a roll-call vote.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Commissioner Rudnick made the second. I've -- forgive me.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Consent Calendar Public Hearings. The next Agenda section includes public hearing items that have been considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The Community Development Director will read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure the public has an understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that that item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. We have four items on the consent calendar for public hearings this evening, and I will briefly go through each of those so that the public is aware of the four items that are on the consent calendar. The first is Item 5A, General Plan Amendment 17-0354. This is a proposal to change the general plan land use designation from low-medium-density residential to high-medium-density residential on approximately 38 acres located at the north side of McCutcheon Road, 1,300 feet west of Ash Road. The second item is Item 5B. This is a general plan amendment and zone change number 17-0356. This is a proposal to change the general plan designation from low-medium-density residential, high-medium-density residential, and a small piece of open space, to an overall designation of low-density residential on approximately 40 acres south of the south end of Daytona Drive, and also a zone change to implement that zoning designation change, to change the zoning from a residential holding zone to the R1 Single Family Zone District for a majority of the site, and the R2 Limited Multi-Family Dwelling District on the southern portion of the site. Item 5C is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6607, and that map was a proposal to approve in a three-year extension on a map that was originally approved three years ago to subdivide 151 single-family homes on 31 acres along the east side of East Hosking Road, approximately a quarter of a mile east of South Union Avenue. The final item on the consent agenda is Item 5D, Revised Vesting Tentative Tract Map 7299. This is a proposal to revise a subdivision map that was previously approved to create 143 lots on 43 acres in the West Ming specific plan area, and the project is proposed to build single-family homes near Ming Avenue and future Highgate Park Boulevard on the west side of town. And that concludes the reading of the Consent Calendar Items.
Thank you. At this time, I will open all of the Consent Calendar Public Hearing items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing item? Please come forward, state your name, and the item that you would like.
Dave Westcott, like to have 5B moved to public hearings.
Thank you.
Gordon Nipp, 5B.
Thank you.
Nick Gardella, 5B.
Thank you.
Lisa Morris, 5B.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lomas, and I'd just like to make note for the audience that it's only necessary for one person to remove an item from Consent Calendar. You're welcome to continue to come up, but you will all have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing for that item as well.
V. Maldonado, 5B.
Thank you.
Shannon Kaiser, 5B.
Melissa Jensen, 5B.
Thank you.
Ryan Jensen, 5B.
Thank you. One more?
Jason Kaiser, 5B.
Thank you. So if I heard right, and we have 5B removed for separate consideration, so we will -- let's see. Do we have any commissioners wishing to remove any items? Seeing none, so now we're just moving 5B. At this time, the public hearing on 5A? Yes. Who is having a hard time?
We're having a very difficult time hearing you.
Thank you. Does that help?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. So, we will now, on our Consent Calendar Public Hearings, we will -- let's see. We have removed 5B, so we will -- I'm looking for a motion to accept 5A, 5C, and 5D.
Before we do, we just need to make sure that the hearings on Item 5A, 5C, and 5D are closed.
Closed, as the attorney says.
Okay. Motion to approve 5A, C, and D.
And that one's Commissioner Bell. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
And that's Commissioner Wade. May I have a roll-call vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we will move on to Agenda Item Six, Public Hearings. It is now time to hear the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items Removed, which would be 5B, from that portion of the agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how each -- how this hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during the statement, but the statements will -- the questions, excuse me, will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing, and try not to repeat remarks of the previous speakers. And in presenting any new facts or comments, please present your facts and comments in a precise and clear way. Ms. Kitchen, may we have a staff report on Agenda Item 5B?
Thank you, Chairman Lomas. I'd like to introduce Steve Esselman. He will be providing the staff presentation this evening. Steve is the principal planner for the Advanced Planning Unit, and his team has taken the lead on processing this project.
Hello, I'm Steve Esselman, the new principal planner for Advanced Planning. This is actually my first Planning Commission meeting, so bear with me if I'm a little bit rough. What we have is General Plan Amendment Zone Change 170356, which is in Ward 6. It is a request to change the general plan amendment for the subject site, which is in the northeastern portion of the City of Bakersfield, from high-medium-density residential and low-medium-density residential to R -- as well as open space, to LR, which is a more restrictive designation. Essentially, the current land use designation would allow for more units than what is being proposed with the land use designation change. They are also asking a zone change from what's called residential holding, which is essentially a placeholder sort of zone, to an actual R1 and R2 zone in the area. The project would result in -- so that shows you -- I'm sorry, that shows you RH and R1 and R2, so that's the zoning there. So if we can go to the next slide. Okay, and that is the general plan designation, LMR, HMR, and the small portion of open space, which is essentially due to drainage down there in the southeast corner, to LR zone. The request is for single-family and some multifamily residential, 143 single-family housing units, as well as 16 duplex units or 32 dwelling units along the south -- the southern border of the site, which would abut up against Jaunt Avenue, which is a collector's street. I think the idea there was to provide buffering between Jaunt and the single-family residential to the north. A little bit of background on the project itself. The subject property was pre-zoned by Ordinance 3579 from County A or Agriculture to City's RH or Residential Holding, 20-acre minimum lot size. That was done in the '90s. Concurrent with that, there was an annexation, Annexation 381, which was completed on March 1st, 1995, which brought this site into -- as well as a large swath of land in this area into the city. And the zone change to RH was to make the site consistent with the general plan land use designation of HMR at the time, and the HMR designation was actually done in the 1990s. So it has been designated HMR for quite a long time. Beyond that, I think that's kind of the project in a nutshell. I don't know if there's anything else that I need to say or speak up to. I'm sorry? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. That's right. In the -- during the -- after staff had created a report, there was actually a few letters that were brought to our attention. There was a letter from the Sierra Club, which is in your staff report, and we have responded to the Sierra Club's letter, mostly regarding the sufficiency of the CEQA documentation. There was also a letter that was sent by Caltrans requesting a traffic impact study. Our City's Traffic Division has determined, for the purposes of the general plan zone change, that the traffic study that was included as part of the environmental analysis is sufficient, and that at a later date, the applicant can coordinate with Caltrans on their concerns and prepare a traffic study for them to their satisfaction. But for our purposes tonight, our City Traffic Division has determined that the traffic study that is appended to the environmental is sufficient. And I think with that, that will conclude my staff report, and if you have any questions, I'll come back on up.
Thank you.
Chairman Lomas, just to add a little bit, you may be wondering what the RH Zone District is. That's something that we don't see very often. It's a residential holding zone that is placed on properties that have an underlying residential land use entitlement, but that aren't quite ready for development. So when the city annexed this property in the early '90s, it already had that HMR designation, which is the orange, on a majority of that site. However, there wasn't development yet in this area. As you can see from the aerial, there are single-family homes to the north, and there are tentative tracts for additional single-family homes on either side. And the intent, again, for the RH zone is to allow for existing agricultural or oil and gas type uses to continue to occur on residentially designated properties until urban development reaches that property. So that's why we're here tonight. The applicant is basically asking to activate the underlying residential designations.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please come forward to the microphone, identify, and proceed.
My name is Adam Aheda. I'm with DeWalt Corporation. We are representing the landowners for these applications, the landowners being Vicki Young and Rex Martin. And I am here to speak in favor of the proposed -- the proposal in front of you. We, you know, as Mr. Esselman has pointed out, we have some landowners who have 40 acres that, you know, just hasn't developed and hasn't had any maps attached to it like the other parcels in the immediate vicinity. So we were trying to bring the zoning and the land use to be in line with the developments that have happened to the north, and also with the parcels that are to the east, the west, and the north that have yet to be developed upon. So with that being said, we do not believe that we're doing -- we're proposing anything that really is kind of out of the ordinary. And as Mr. Esselman did bring up, we are aware that there is some opposition or concern to what we are proposing. One thing that he mentioned really hit it on the nail as to why we have a swath of R2 or higher density that we are proposing, which is Jaunt Avenue is subject to a little higher traffic than traditional residential roadway. So we were proposing to make that R2 to kind of act as a buffer, so that we didn't have any single-family residences with, like, a driveway that, you know, would abut that roadway. So we're just trying to, you know, not have kind of like a dangerous situation for, you know, like a family or anything like that on that roadway. And then, as has been brought to your attention as well, with regard to the Sierra Club and the Caltrans letters that have been received, we have reviewed that. We believe that we have handled the environmental concerns adequately per what the commission requires and the Planning Department requires, and we are aware of what Caltrans has said, and we have conceded that we will, in fact, work with Caltrans beyond whatever action the, you know, the commission takes tonight. And with regard to the residential opposition, you know, we have been in contact with the Planning Department, and it is our position that if it would help to allow this, you know, application to proceed and to go forward, the landowners are open, as a condition of approval, to only build single-family residences even in the areas where we have requested the R2 designation. So with that being said, I can answer any questions, if there are any, but that is our position at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And it looks like there's probably several, so please, if you would, everyone take a seat that would like to speak in the front row, and when you come to the microphone, please just state your name clearly for the record. Who wants to go first?
Dave Westcott. I live in the neighborhood north of the proposed development. The only issue that I was going to bring up is that, you know, obviously don't mind the R1 designation that's out there. I just can't see any benefit to having any R2 out there. I'm not sure what the reason behind that was, to bring in multifamily housing out into that area. Far as my knowledge, there's nothing east of Morning Drive, other than, I think, in the real broader area, they may have a small apartment complex out there, but I think that is in a private community. But there's problems that I could foresee that we're already dealing with right now is with response times from BPD just getting out to that far of an area in the northeast Bakersfield. I think bringing in a large amount of people and basically smashing as many as we can into duplexes in a smaller land area is going to bring more problems to the neighborhood. You know, I think that it would just be inherent in having that many more people come out there. So I personally don't have any problem with the development that's being proposed, as long as everything stayed R1, single-family residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Nick Gardella. I also live in the development north of the proposed development area. So my concern is just safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. There's very limited sidewalks in the area. There are no bike lanes. There's no crosswalks that would allow children in that development to cross the busier streets there. Obviously Kern Canyon, State Route 184. I'm sure you guys remember the East High Student that was hit. I was also on State Route 184, and there had been long discussions with Caltrans trying to get a crosswalk in there, and it took a young lady being injured pretty severely to get a crosswalk put in there. So also, in the area of Kern Canyon, where Jaunt Avenue comes out between Bedford Green, the sightlines, there's quite -- there's two depressions in the topography out there that don't allow more than 100, 150 meters of direct line of sight. So traffic going -- entering and exiting Kern Canyon, you don't have enough line of sight to see far enough, especially since the speed limit on Kern Canyon is 50 miles an hour there. There's no traffic signals out there. There's simply stop signs. If we're adding potentially up to 300 new vehicles in that area, two-lane roads just can't -- they can barely keep up, especially during drop-off and pickup times from the schools. It's quite congested there already. The other safety issue is there's frequent gunfire right where that development is proposed. So there's people out there who ride dirt bikes, four-wheelers, ATVs regularly through that area, and they shoot rifles, shotguns, pistols. It's just not a place where -- I mean, I've had to call BPD numerous times through the years, and, again, you know, response time is not that great. So it's generally not a safe area. Yeah, in addition, there is an elementary school, Caesar Chavez Elementary. There's no crosswalks that allow -- Chase is fairly heavily traveled. It's a kind of a main artery to our subdivision, but there's no crosswalks that allow safe passage for children to go from the south -- from the west side to the east side of There's extremely limited recreation areas throughout there. There's been a little bit of development at the -- around the softball field, but it can't accommodate more than 60, 70 people at a time. And there's very limited retail establishments. There's no place to buy fresh food. And again, the walkability and bikeability is nonexistent because of the lack of sidewalks, bike lanes, walking trails out there, and the lack of retail, there's really nothing -- no place for people to go buy fresh food out there. So I'd say to add more families to this area, you're simply going to be putting more people in cars and adding to an already very, very congested area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Morris. I also live north of that area. One of the biggest concerns I think we all agree on is safety. My concern is, especially with just a couple months ago, we had all the northern fires. Now we're dealing with all the southern fires. We live in a very area where there's a lot of brush. There's a lot of residents that live over here. If you look in the main road, there's only one main road for us to get out of. We go exit off of Chase or Mason Morin, and we're all on 184. So what are we going to do if we add another bunch of 100-and-something homes? And now you have duplexes where you can have more than one person stay in a home. And I came, growing up, which is, you know, I'm just going to share a personal story. I came, growing up, very poor. I came, growing up, from a neighborhood where gunshots were normal. Duck and covering was normal. I went out there and was sold the American dream, that you were going to have peace of mind and quiet and not live around apartments and all that. And that's what I bought out there. That's where I went, because I am an east side. I grew up on the east side. I love the east side of the neighborhood, and that's where I've been -- that's where I went and went to go buy. I love it out there. But I also know, living around apartments, and when you live with people who don't own their stuff, they don't respect it as well as people who do own their stuff. And quite frankly, I'd ask any one of you who are sitting on the benches, would you want to live next to an apartment building? Would you sit and live on Pacific or Potomac or anywhere else in the neighborhoods where there's high crime rate? No. Because that's not where I raised my -- what I want to raise my family, but that's where I grew up as a child. I had no choice. Now I have a choice, and I'm asking you guys to please not make our children's life in danger when we chose to come out here. Not to mention, they're not telling you that we already have several lawsuits in the neighborhood because the soil is really bad, and all our homes are cracking. They're setting themselves up for lawsuits for homes that are cracking. They're not telling you the legal risks that everybody else is going through. But my biggest two concerns are the crime rate's going to go up, and I'm concerned of brush fires, because, like he says, people are shooting in their ATVs. All it takes is one single spark, and that whole neighborhood could go up. And how are we supposed to get out in safety? People's lives are going to be on end. We've already had too many accidents on 184 that's caused people to die, and that's the only road we have going out. Thank you.
I'm the vice chair of the local Sierra Club chapter. I'll try to -- I'll try to be brief and let the Sierra Club letter on the subject, which you should have, speak for itself, but let me emphasize a couple of important points. Climate change is probably the defining issue for our species. And in order to address climate change and greenhouse gas emissions, all new housing should, it should include solar photovoltaic panels. Best to put it in when the, when the, when the house is being built so that they don't have to tear up the roof and, and rewire later. What better place to generate electricity from the sun than Bakersfield? So you should be requiring all this housing to, to, to have solar photovoltaic panels. If there's any hope in cleaning up our dirty air, we need to address emissions from vehicles. Electric vehicles, EVs, don't have any direct emissions. So we need to encourage folks to drive electric vehicles and, and ideally charge them from their solar panels. At the very least, you should be requiring all new housing to include EV charging stations, level-two charging stations. Easy, relatively inexpensive when the housing is being constructed. This would help address both air pollution, criteria pollutants, and, and, and climate change. Green building. The project should comply at least with CalGreen Tier 1 standards. On another front, biological resources. This project area is, is, is a known potential habitat for several endangered species. San Joaquin kitfox, blunt-nosed leopard lizards. They've actually been sighted there in the past. For the blunt-nosed leopard lizard, you should be requiring preservation of blunt-nosed leopard lizard habitat elsewhere to offset the loss of this property. For the kitfox, keeping in mind that kitfoxes adapt readily to the urban environment, this project should be designed with urban kitfox conservation measures in mind, perhaps including artificial kitfox dens and, and movement corridors, as suggested in the expert document that I attached to our letter. I don't know that you've gotten a copy of that, actually. Regarding native plants, some of the native plant species could be reintroduced by, by replanting them in, in project open space areas. Landscaping should consist of native and/or drought-tolerant plants. This should be a city requirement. I'll stop with this and refer you to the many more details in the, in the Sierra Club letter, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Anna Lomely. We moved to that area because of the fact that, like our previous speaker said, the crime rate in, in Bakersfield was getting too bad. We moved out there, totally loved it. You could see the sky, you could see the stars. Sometimes you could go out there and there'll be a kitfox, there'll be a coyote. Those are one of the things that we love out there. We got to know our neighbors. We all talk to each other. We all know who our neighbors are. Unfortunately, with this new development, one of our issues is safety. Okay? Very, very important. We have three schools in that area, and I fear for those kids. You have them going ahead and going through the fields. They love walking out there. Unfortunately, with more traffic, it's going to be a very dangerous area. Another thing is you do not have enough streets going out into 184. We need more streets going out there if we're going to have that new development. Please, if there is, we need a fire station nearby. We need more policing because of the fact that we are getting more crime in that area. Tasing, stealing, packages being missed from their, the front yard, the, the door. I mean, it's gotten really bad, bad in the first two years as of the past. So please consider all that when you consider putting in the duplexes. I don't mind the houses. We'll get to know the neighbors, but think of all those things that are going to be included in the building. Also duplexes. Someone who lives in a duplex is not so much concerned about where they live. They could always go ahead and move. But a person who owns their home will take care of their home.
Hi, good evening. My name's Melissa Jensen, and we bought our home in 2003 from Martin Homes. And he sold it to us with the idea of this was going to be a nice little residential area with nice homes. And so we've been there this whole time. We love it out there. Our neighbors are very involved. We are on the Nextdoor app, and we just are always constantly talking to each other because of all the crime that's been going around lately. With these homes coming in, there's a lot of concern about safety. Martin was supposed to actually live in our community back on McKenna. He was going to, he actually bought, well, he had everything there, but he was going to buy a, a home there on McKenna, or build a home on McKenna. And then he ended up not. And a lot of it is due to, like someone was saying, the homes out there just having issues with the soil. And so he sold several of those lots to another developer. And just in the area that we've seen, there's been developments coming in, and they start the development, you'll see the sign, and nothing happens, or they start to till the soil and start, you know, making it flat. And then the next thing you know, it stops, and it'll be five years later, and then someone else will come in. It's very expensive to build out there. That's the whole reasoning. They keep coming into all these, these problems because of the soil out there. So to expect to build a low-income house or apartments or whatever, I, I think that's a, a false idea because you can't build out there and not expect to, to pay a lot of money because the soil is really bad out there. We have a problem with traffic. As you heard, there's only two places you can go, either through Finish or Chase or Mason Marin, and they both lead to 184. We've seen firemen coming down 184 and pass it because it's poor lighting. There's just not a whole lot of visual out there for people to see, so it's a hazard for emergency situations I'd hate to see with more people coming in. Also, there's no bus transportation out in our area whatsoever. The closest, I believe, is on, where's the?
Morning Drive.
Morning Drive, yes, thank you. Morning Drive and 178. It's, it's quite a ways from there. And so for lower income, I mean, I know some people are going to have vehicles, but not everyone's going to have a vehicle. It's just really not a, a place for lower-income homes. And, well, the Sierra Club has it right. We have coyotes out there, and we have kitfoxes. You hear them at night, and with more homes, that, that would also go away. So please consider our, our problems here. We just, we love our area and we want to keep it. We have a, everybody always says, oh, East Bakersfield, but we love our area of East Bakersfield. It's, it's not your typical East Bakersfield. So I hope that going forward, you guys would keep that so that we, all of East Bakersfield isn't considered bad. We, we do have some areas of East Bakersfield that are good, and we want to show that to, to people that it's not all bad. So I hope you take that into consideration too, building out in, in Bakersfield and making it a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with everything she said.
You better, buddy.
As a good husband should.
Good evening. God bless you. Keith Foltz. I had the privilege, my wife and I had the privilege of functioning as general contractor in 2007, 2008. We border the property. We have wrought iron fence to have a view. Some people would call it ugly. We call it beautiful, to have open space behind us, have a wrought iron gate, take my bike out or dog out. That will be gone with this. So this is just a personal thing, things happen. I understand that. However, if there is a financial aspect, I'm, I'm sure the city will make income of this, the developers will make income. If there's a devaluation of property of any regard, I'm a minister. We started late trying to get retirement funds. We changed to a 15-year loan and put as much money as we can into our principal, but everything has to go perfect. If I retire in two and a half years, I've got to have everything perfect, or I can't change the loan to a, what do you call, reverse mortgage loan where we could stay on our home. So if my property value goes down at all, I have to move. And my wife has to move, and she loves the house. And getting her to leave the other house to this house is just a big deal. So that, that is a big deal to us, if it impacts us. So the, I'm assuming that duplexes would possibly affect value. Because the value's important, I check into Zillow all the time. I don't know how valuable that is, but usually the value of the house goes up or down, 1,000, 1,500. Last week, it went down 22,000. And I called Zillow, asked them why, and they said, well, we have a bunch of algorithms. Basically, they didn't give me an answer. But I noticed the neighbor's house went down $32,000. I, I don't understand that. I'm not into that field. But if that happens, it's a, it's a tragedy for us. I'm a minister, and so sometimes I like to get with the people. So I have taken the bus home on a few occasions, which means I have to walk the last two miles because the bus only goes out to Morning Drive. And walking that 184 is very dangerous. And I assume if we have more homes out there, especially duplexes, you're going to have some people taking a bus out there. I, I think that'd be very, very dangerous. Do value the quiet and peace. It's beautiful. We love it there. So those are, my concern, last thing, is that being the general contractor, I follow the city's guidelines and code explicitly and more than, because I'm going to live in this house, and we still have significant cracking. And I know I called the city about the planning, and they, they like to say, well, it must be the developer. We follow code plus, and, 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 and I, I just think the city planning needs to think about the soil and the impact of, of the foundations and how, how that is done. It's critical. One last thing. Sometimes I get frustrated, people talking global warming and stuff. And I used to be a poo-pooer of it. But I'm also an avid backpacker, 35 years in the high Sierras. And, and just my experience of seeing the loss of glaciers that I used to see are no longer there after years. I've become a believer, and I know that some people aren't, but my own eyes say it. So some of the Sierra Club stuff has value to me. Okay? And so I just want to support that as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is V. Maldonado. I want to share just a couple kind of personal point of views. So A, the mention of the Caltrans report, I will have to disagree, because let me just paint the picture for you. If you start at Nile Street at about Morning Drive, and you go east, and you come up to the Hillcrest Cemetery, and over, over this slight hill and down to Bedford Green Drive and Chase Avenue, those are two, it's a single lane, two-lane, okay? So there's one lane going west and one lane going east. And it's very narrow and not lighted, very dangerous. So to put more homes out there, I think it would just significantly impact the congestion out that's already out there. There's a school that is Cato and Fletcher that is north of 180, 184. And during the school year, we have cars that are leaving the unpaved area, okay, and going in and out of traffic, okay? So that's how congested it is. And then we have people coming in and making left-hand turns, so you come to an abrupt stop. And, and my, my concern is just safety. The other piece is, I just, I, my, my concern is, when we have duplexes, is it going to turn into a tenant-based, lease-based type of scenario, where we have renters, we have high overturn, we have people moving in, moving out? I mean, I live with my husband and my 13-year-old. We love it out there. And I'm just, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm okay with single-family homes, but I object to the duplexes being out there.
My name's Jason Kaiser. I live in, off of Philip and McKenna. The traffic is definitely a big concern, especially with the children in Cato. And people do leave from the Vinland Road, which is not a road, it's just dirt coming onto that pavement during the winter. The road gets extremely slick. I have seen several incidents there of near misses. And it, when you're coming and you're heading eastbound, coming over the hill, and when people are trying to make a left-hand turn down Vinland on that dirt road, you have to come to an abrupt stop because there is nothing visually you can do to see those cars stopped. So that's one concern with the traffic impact. I don't agree with the study. Chase Avenue going onto 184 is basically the main artery for our area. Even Mason Marin Drive coming onto 184 is actually limited, so Chase ends up becoming actually the main artery. The stop sign there, people run it all the time. I've seen children, matter of fact, yesterday trying to cross the crosswalk there, and the visual there, there is actually a hill, that's a slight hill. It's extremely hard to see coming in and out of there. And you cannot see cars that are heading eastbound or northeastbound on Kern Canyon Road. So if we're adding these other houses, I definitely think if, if it's going to go forth, it needs to be all R1, no R2. And, and he's concerned about a buffer zone on John. Well, this place is not developed yet. We have a great opportunity to make something special out here. It's very low-impact. Neighbors are very close out there. We all get along. We all have our different beliefs, but it's a very unique community out there. My son, he likes to go out the back, and he has a quad. He rides. I have the opportunity to show things that I was able to do when I was younger, because I did grow up out there. I lived over by Foothill High School. And as the community started getting built up, the crime rate went through the roof. Walls were getting tagged, things were getting stolen, break-ins, you name it, it was going on. So I figured, because it was a very slow-growth area, that I would be safe buying my house out in that area, doing that it is low-impact in single-family dwellings and R1, because I did my research. The soil does move. It is definitely a lot of clay. It expands and contracts with moisture outside. Rains, the soil expands, causes concrete to move. As it dries out, obviously, like clay, it cracks and it starts to open up. That is the problem out there. So it does cost more to build a house out there properly. You have to run rebar in your concrete, and your footings for your house have to be a lot deeper. Your pools have to be reinforced differently, because you have to take into consideration the movement of that soil. Like I said, it's a great, great area to live in. It's quiet. It is low-impact. The only problem is, is, is with this coming in, the traffic is going to be notorious. I see it. Now, keeping it R1, I think, would help eliminate that. And also, it brings the people into that area that respect their property and come out there for that. out there for that purpose of being a low-impact. He's wanted to make a, the gentleman that was developing wanted to make a buffer zone. Well, I have an idea for that. Keep it all R1 and just put a wall on jaunt. If it's going to be a high traffic, then just make it entrance and exits onto jaunt and keep the buffer with a wall. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sharon Kaiser. I'd like to say I agree with all my neighbors. They basically said everything I wanted to say. I would just want to give you guys one point. I did not actually receive notice of this hearing. I found out through my Nextdoor app. And I think it's only fair that our neighborhood and this surrounding neighborhoods would have notice of this. And being the fact that not everybody has had notice, we should maybe table this to another date. So everybody has an opportunity to express what they want and what they want to do. But I agree with, the one big issue I have is the traffic on 184. I work on Nile Street, so I come over that hill every morning to go to work and every day coming home. And I can tell you several times that I have almost been hit or in a very bad accident because the way the people drive on that street, going in and out of Cato through the field. So I think there's a lot of information that you need to take into consideration for the establishment of the houses that we have out there now and the development we need to have first to accommodate the houses that we have out there now for the traffic versus bringing more houses in that the traffic and the issues won't be able to handle the load. And I also support that single-family houses because my property value is important to me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Again, if you want to plan on speaking, if you could come to the front row.
My name is Amber Ike. I just recently moved into this neighborhood last December. We bought out here because it was a great area. It was a great area for the kids to grow up. We basically live in a house that backs up to nothing but fields. We're able to go on hikes with our kids. There's been times where there have been loads of sheep out in our, basically right behind us, where we could take the kids out and they could see all of that. We have a lot of houses that are now turning into rentals itself. And since then, the crime rates since just we've been there, which has been almost a year now, has gone up significantly. Putting in basically the R2s, which would be the duplexes, I think would just be the worst ideal that you could throw out there. Single-family homes, as I'm pretty sure the majority of us are pretty okay with. We want to increase our property value, not decrease it by putting in duplexes. And that's exactly what that would do. So I'm completely all for the R1, but not the R2. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Ed Maldonado. My big concerns are with the schools and crowding. Right now, we have Cesar Chavez on the south side of 184. And I know it's pretty maxed out, so a lot of the kids have to go over to Cato and Fletcher. The problem with that is the easement for the kids. They can't walk across the highway because it's against the law. So they have to be bused a quarter of a mile. That's been a big issue when it came to, I thought, developing the community and, you know, the ease for the students. Traffic is also a big problem. Everybody here has obviously said it. So those are the two big things that I'm concerned with. R1, obviously, if there's going to be development, and it's coming, and we can't change that, I understand that. But R1 is reasonable. R2 is when you start stacking more people in there, students especially for the schools. That is what I'm concerned with. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Martha Reese. I just recently moved into this area also, just in February. So I'm finding out a lot of new things, getting to know the neighbors and also on the Neighbor App. I also did not receive any notice. That's where I saw that this was happening today. I would like to be notified if there's any way that I can go down the list or anything so I can find out about these things. One of the reasons that we moved out there was because even though it's still close to the city, Bakersfield, the air is so much better out there. Bringing in all these other cars, all these other traffic because any of us that have family, our kids are going to grow up eventually, they're going to start driving. Now, it's not only the parents that are moving around in cars. Now, you have all the kids, you have the buses, and you have all of these things that's going to mess up the air also. The other reason was the crime rate. I came from a south, no, from the west, southwest area, that was a nice area, until they started renting some of the houses that were just built in front of my street. I lived at that house for 12 years. And the street in front of me, there was development there that was going to start. It never started until about a year ago. Those houses were built. One of them was rented out. They decided to turn it into a Section 8. And as soon as that happened, that street was no longer safe. Two weeks after this family started moving in and we started to see more of this happening, there were shootings on that street where, this was a street where I could sit out there with my kids. I became best friends with my Nextdoor neighbor. Our kids grew up together during those 12 years. We could be out there until 1 o'clock in the morning. Everything was safe. You could, you would know that what kids were out there. You knew everyone. As soon as those other houses were built and allowed a couple of them to become Section 8, then everything changed. Shootings down the neighborhood, and you knew who they were because you would see things. They would come knocking at your door. There was times that I would wake up in the middle of the night thinking there was a fight going on outside, and it was just people talking. And there was other times that I would wake up because the lights of the police were there often. I recently moved out here. I would hate to see things like that happening to this neighborhood. That is such a, such a nice place. I'm okay with the houses being built. It does help with the, with the prices for the house. I'm assuming it'll be better for us, not worse. So the value and all of that is also very important, the safety with all the schools. I also have kids that come out here. I have nieces and nephews that come and love to play out in my front yard. When other developments like apartments and things like that start to come around, you can't do that anymore. And that's what I'm hearing from my neighbors as well. So that's one of my concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Does any commissioner have questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter. It's only time to ask questions. Any commissioners have any questions? No. And so is, now we'll move on to the rebuttal period. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will only have five minutes total. So make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of previous speakers to ensure that everyone wishing to provide a rebuttal comment has a chance to do so. I'm sorry? All right. So she's going to set the clock.
Yes, that's three.
And, I'm sorry, I know your name's Adam, but I didn't get your last name.
Ohjeda. O-J-E-D-A.
Thank you. And give us a moment.
Sure.
I don't know what that means. P. South?
I was just saying you could just count off two minutes, Dana, and start at three minutes.
All right, there we go.
All right. Okay, so once again, Adam Ohjeda, DeWalt Corporation and the engineers for the property owners. So I've heard a lot of comments here tonight. There's a lot to take in. So I'll try to address them to the best of my ability. So I've resoundingly heard the opposition regarding the duplexes or the R2, however we want to state it. And I'll reiterate what I said earlier. We came here expecting the opposition. We, we heard about it ahead of time. We talked amongst ourselves and we are completely willing to agree to a condition of approval that we would only build single-family residences. So just want to reiterate that. And hopefully that, you know, satisfies most of the residence concerns. So I'll just go down a couple of points regarding some of the concerns about environmental. We already conducted biological studies for the area that were in line with the planning department's requirements. And actually, we're going to have to do more biological assessments, you know, should we get approval here tonight or whenever approval is given. And I also would like to say that approval tonight, I hope that the residents understand, does not guarantee that any home's going to start to be built anytime soon. This is the first of kind of a lengthy process, as I think all of you know, to ultimately getting a tract developed and to get, you know, machines actually out there to build anything. And as I think most of you know, we have various tracts that are at various stages of this process. And they are much, much further along than what we're proposing here tonight. I do want to speak on the various concerns about traffic and pedestrian safety. It should actually please the residents that Caltrans has shown concern here. What we did for the planning department is we conducted a study that showed that because we're going from LMR and HMR down to LR land use, we are actually taking the amount of traffic down from where theoretically it could be if the land use remained at LMR and HMR. Rough numbers, it was like 100 fewer trips in the AM and the PM commute and then 1,200 total trips throughout the day. So that is to the benefit of the residents. So one of the things about the Caltrans requirement is they are going to require us to do a full traffic impact study. I don't know what the conditions of the other tracts were, but one of the things that could happen as a result of that impact study, and it's not a guarantee, is that we would have to do things like put in some sort of a traffic signal or more lighting or things of that nature, the various things that the residents are concerned with. I'll also point out that this project, when we get closer to actually building, will have to pay significant traffic impact fees to the city, which is utilized to alleviate some of the concerns that the residents do have. I can't speak about how the residents were or were not notified. I will say that the applicants, we did what was required of us. Generally, I understand that the city sends out mailers. I believe that those went out. So I can't speak any more than that. And then on the soil issues, I don't know how the other projects or the other tracts that have been out there were developed. I will say that just like any other project that I've ever worked on, we will be doing a full-scale geotechnical survey of the site that will help us to develop and design the project such that we don't have issues like they're talking about. However, I will state that even your best geotechnical studies can never really fully guarantee that things like that will never happen. As a civil engineer, I do have a little background on that. And actually, one of the things that we are seeing is that as we get out of the drought, believe it or not, the groundwater is actually coming up. And it's creating these types of issues throughout Bakersfield. I live outside of Arvin. It's creating problems with residents out there. So, you know, you can do the best job in the world with your geotechnical studies, but you never fully guarantee that you're going to not see some settlement that you never really planned on. And I think that pretty much, pretty much touches upon the various items that the residences have brought up. And if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
We've got a few more minutes for those in favor. Anyone? And we will shift to those in opposition and their five-minute period. We'll need another five minutes, Dana. We'll do it, we'll start three and then we'll do the two. So anyone wishing to address what was just said in this rebuttal period, we'll have five minutes.
If I may?
Of course. Please state your name.
My name is Anna Lomely. One of the concerns that he gave is that even in Arvin and because of we're having more moisture and what have you, unfortunately, this is an ongoing thing with this area. So it has nothing to do with, you know, we're having a more rainy area, we're having a drought or whatever. This is a constant thing in this area. It's been going on for years. We used to go over there in the 70s and ride our bikes. This is this area. Another thing is, they had, so far we have seen nothing. The only street coming into that area is Daytona, okay? Chase, excuse me, I'm sorry. 184 to Chase to Daytona. Nothing has been spoken regarding, okay, how many streets are going to be going out in case there's an emergency police, fire department, regular traffic coming in. That would be an issue right there. Another thing is the lighting. Yes, we all want lighting and what have you, but one of the things that we really enjoy out there is that we like seeing the sky. You cannot see that in town. With all the lighting in most places here in town, I have yet to see more than maybe a handful of stars. Out there, you could even see the Milky Way. Now, that's going to be an impact on there. How much lighting? We have bats out there. We have animals that go, are native to that area. What will happen to their more or less livelihood and environment, what have you? That's it.
Thank you. I might suggest, since it's only a five-minute period, if anyone that wants to speak, just line up so that you know of your neighbors who wants to say something so that you don't take up all the time. Please go to the microphone.
Again, Lisa Morris. I would just like to state with his statement that he's still willing to do single development housing. We would all like that in writing. We don't want him, them to come back later on and say, oh, well, we said that, but we didn't write it down. We, as residents, I think we'd all come together and want that formally in writing.
Dave Westcott, and I'll tag along after her. If we could, the commissioner board could not approve that until we saw that in the next agenda, that that was removed from the R2 and the multifamily dwelling.
Nick Gardella, again, the, there's already a development that's not shown. It's on the west side of Bedford Green and the 178, which is already adding dozens of new homes. So again, congestion, and those homes are, the grading's in progress right now. They've already poured concrete corners up there. So there's already, there's already new development there. And nothing's been done to the streets, lights, widening sidewalks, bike lanes, crosswalks. None of, none of, none of those things have been done for the previous development that's already underway at the corner of Bedford Green and the 178. So we really have no assurances that a developer is going to do, is going to comply with anything that we say or Caltrans says. And the other thing is, everybody here knows the soil moves out there. We've all, you know, my home was built three years ago. It was approved by the Planning Commission. The civil engineers got out there and said, hey, we're going to, we're going to pour Prestaste concrete out there. We're going to add more rebar. We're going to make deeper footings. Our houses are still moving. In fact, we have a lawsuit right now with our neighbors against the builder because our houses continue to move. Why would we build more houses when we know that the civil engineers, what they've presented to the Planning Commission, it still doesn't hold the house in place? So until somebody can absolutely verify that, hey, when we use this particular method, the home won't move, it hasn't been done. It hasn't been done. And everybody, so you're basically inviting... It hasn't been done and everybody, so you're basically inviting more homeowners to have more lawsuits against their builders because they can't get the soil to stop moving out there.
Hi, my name's Melissa Jensen. Is it possible for you to change that screen to where you actually see the streets, the terrains?
We're nine seconds into your five-minute rebuttal.
Okay, sorry.
If you'd like to wrap up your comments.
Yes. Oh, gosh, I lost my train of thought. There's been a lot of problems out there with our soil. One of our neighbors, he had a pool built, and this is the kind of things that we have problems with. The actual pool blew out into the next.
Excuse me, just a moment. Your time is up, but, Andy, is it all right to give him one more minute? Or do we have to cut it off right now? We have to cut it off, sorry. We are at five minutes.
That's only chair, just for the public. That's only so it's fair for both sides.
Understood. Thank you. Got to have a rule, sorry, guys. All right, so we have finished our rebuttal periods and I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it for the commission for comment and action. I have got Commissioner Rednick up.
Commissioner Lomis, if I might just help answer a couple of the questions that came up, I might be able to help expedite the conversation a little bit. The applicant, I think, has indicated that he's heard loud and clear the opposition of the neighborhood. The planning department is very sensitive to these concerns as well. And as such, we word our hearing notices to indicate that the proposal is R1 and R2 or a more restrictive district. And what that does is it empowers your commission to approve something more restrictive than what's being requested. Therefore, you can only approve the R1 tonight for the entire site. And therefore, it's done, it's said, it's in writing, and there is no additional option for R2 after that point. And that would be your recommendation onto council. And I'm also available to answer any questions if you have any related to the other concerns, but I believe they'll all be addressed essentially through the R1 approval. And the applicant has indicated that they agree to that.
Can we go in order, if that's okay? Commissioner Bell? Is it very pertinent right this very second? Can we go in order? Okay, Commissioner Bell, if Commissioner Rednick doesn't mind.
Just quickly, a question. So, regarding the soil, are we able, I know it's been, I don't know if it's a restriction within Bakersfield, are we able to request to the geotechnical that they do something such as, well, I know there's just increased soils methods. There's places in Bakersfield that require special foundations, and I know that area is wrought with that type of thing. Are we able to make a condition to that effect?
The Uniform Building Code already addresses that. And I have one of our building department engineers here that can get into the specific details if we need to, but I don't know that we do. Essentially, we do require an engineering and soil study at the grading and building permit stage. And what that study does is it indicates the type of foundation and requirements that would be necessary based on those soils in order to address it. And again, that is stipulated by the Uniform Building Code.
Good to go? All right, Commissioner Rednick, it's all yours.
Thank you. The first question I have is for staff. One of the more important things that came up from everyone's comments was the traffic and traffic flow and access and ingress and et cetera. Is there a regional traffic study or a regional design? You've got six or seven or eight tenant track maps approved. There's got to be something that's going to get our traffic flowing differently than it is currently. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. We've got Daniel Padilla here from Public Works who can elaborate more, but in summary, we have a traffic, a regional traffic impact fee program in the city of Bakersfield in the metropolitan area. And when every single home is built, that home also will pay a significant traffic impact fee that goes into a pot that is intended to develop all of the roads in this area. And as these homes come online, those funds are used to improve the roads. In addition to that, the individual tracts are responsible for building and constructing the roads that are immediately adjacent to that property. So, that's the system that's in place to address these kinds of issues.
So, in other words, Jaunt Avenue will be developed to a more capacity than it currently is to help alleviate some of the flow that the folks are concerned about.
That's correct. Jaunt Avenue is designated as a collector in our central, or in our general plan circulation element, so eventually it'll be a full four-lane road.
So, that should alleviate a lot of those concerns. Okay, great. And then I have a question for the representative from DeWalt.
Could you come to the microphone, please?
You talked about 16 duplex lots. Would that be 32 units if my math is correct?
That's correct, yes.
If you did those as single-family, what would that area represent in single-family?
Well, generally speaking, the total acre, or total area of each duplex lot would probably be equivalent to approximately one single-family lot, although it would probably be slightly more than 16, you know? So, I couldn't put an exact number on it. It would definitely be less than 32, but it would, you know, maybe around 20 or so.
So, in other words, we're only adding 16, maybe 18 more units to the whole area development by you getting the R2 designation. Am I saying that correctly?
For, yes, well, any of the case, yes.
Okay. Because I've seen a lot of these R2 buffers, especially in the Southwest, and I think it's a very attractive thing. I'm not totally against the concept if it's done properly. In fact, I know some of the rents that they charge are darn near as much as folks' mortgages. So, I know you're not always attracting a less desirable element with that. So, I do think there is some good in your concept. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, now, you can give comments now. The public hearing's closed.
Thanks. Getting back to some of the other things that folks were saying, the gentleman from the Sierra Club, I like a lot of his ideas, the solar. In fact, I have solar in my house. I think electric cars are great. I also am concerned about the cost of these things and to burden a developer and a consumer with those is challenging. So, I think they're great concepts. I think when they come down, I think people should have choices, but I think in theory, I think those are great ideas. To the folks that have issues, I, as I talked before, I think your biggest issue is the traffic, and I, hopefully, we've discussed that, so it helps alleviate that a little bit. The other concern you have is you like the country feel of where you are, and I can appreciate that. I grew up on the east side. I used to ride motorcycles out there 40 years ago. And so, I really understand how nice it is out there and how it's, you know, it's kind of fun in a sense. But I also look at the developer's perspective, and these folks have invested money inland. You've got existing zoning that is there, and they're going to develop it, and it's just a matter of time. And I'm, you know, I'm sorry that your lifestyle is going to change, but that's progress and that's what happens when a city develops. And so, it's a difficult situation, but that is how things generally work. You talked about your housing values. I don't know what the existing value of homes are out there, but as expensive as it is to build these days and as expensive as it is to develop land, my guess would be the new houses that would come out of the ground in two to three years would be comparable in value to what you have. So, I don't think it's going to hurt your values in that regard. I think it's a, just a normal pattern of what happens in developing of a city. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bell, did you want to, now it's your turn.
Yeah, I'll just make the comment. Thank you. I'm inclined to believe more in the R1 zone, and my reason is, is that largely, that is a rural area, it's appearing as, as it's evolving out there, it's appearing to be more rural. I don't want to urbanize it. I don't want to start a trend either, or it would be my opinion anyway, that you could start a trend by going from duplex to something a little even heavier, even though the zone and the general plan gives us that direction and that opportunity. I'm inclined to stick more with an R1 zone. I think it's something they could start with, and at some time later, if the developers are only mapping now, they're only putting what we call paper lots on the development. It's my opinion that's how it should be developed and would be less intrusive on existing neighbors, and I don't see a massive amount of new development going out there. I think this would be a good trend that would hold home values and be good, good planning. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kater.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk on a few issues and a few thoughts on the process. One with the idea of access. So, I'm looking at the staff report on the first page, and it looks like Jaunt, the intention of Jaunt is to connect someday to Vineland and cross 184 to connect the neighborhood north of 184 to the neighborhood south. Is that, that's sort of the ending of Jaunt? And that connection, as I think, I mean, for me, looking at, listening to residents' concerns, I think that one of the dilemmas of this area is that a lot of community-serving infrastructure is sort of on a highway island that we haven't done a very good job of creating friendly ways to cross. And so, a really beautiful elementary school and middle school are virtually inaccessible from the neighborhood. And so, reading the staff report, it appears that this tract is, would only be responsible for, for just the portion of Jaunt that is in front of the parcel. But I was wondering what the timeline was for creating that connection to Vineland, because that seems like a way of creating a north-south connection and...
Commissioner Kater, so that would be likely, I don't have the files in front of me, but that's likely programmed through the adjacent tract. I think it's 6671, so they would have that same connection.
Yes.
To complete Jaunt. And then those TIF fees that we talked about later would be programmed for any regional improvements beyond that. But because Jaunt is a collector, they would be required to have potentially a bike lane. We'd have to look at the bike plan to see if this is designated, and they would require to be have full sidewalks, landscape strips and those things.
Okay, but the connectivity of that to the other side is contingent on the adjacent parcel developing first? There's no...
I believe so. However, once this site goes through a mapping process, at that point, Public Works and Fire would both evaluate the project because the fired code does require two points of ingress and egress for this new development. So, if it's ahead of tract 6671, they may be required to put in some of those access points first.
Okay, and is that outside of our commission to?
It is.
I believe, yeah.
That will come back before the commission if there's a tract map developed on this site in the future.
Okay, because I am very sympathetic to that barrier that really does create, you know, a beautiful amenity just on the other side of access. And then, am I, am I correct in the adjacent parcel to the direct south is currently zoned open space?
No, that's also residential holding.
On, so I'm looking at your staff report, location and proposed land use designations?
So, the general plan for that is open space, and then the zoning is RH.
Oh, the zoning is RH, okay. So, it's kind of...
Those are actually inconsistent and something that would need to be cleaned up.
Okay, because I was saying, I was thinking that's a great preservation of the hillside that neighbors love, but we'll save that for another hearing. Yeah, I guess my only other thing is, I think with R1 versus the R2, I, it sounds like the developer has reached an agreement with the neighbor and so, but I would just like to say that the density doesn't always mean blight. And I think as we look at this neighborhood and, you know, it's really being, we're not, the city has not designated this area to be a series of ranches. It's a, it's a neighborhood and it's a community. And I think a community needs multiple uses. It needs a diverse group of uses, whether, I do live across the street from an apartment building and I love my neighbors. And so, I think to infer many, many things on neighbors in a denser housing situation is maybe not, yeah, I'll leave that at that. But I do, I do think that with that being said, if the developers are minimal and the communities are minimal, I would be fine with the R1 designation.
That's it?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Can you, can you address the issue of notice for this meeting?
Absolutely, Commissioner Coleman. As required by our zoning ordinance, all property owners within 300 feet of the property line were provided with a direct mailer. In addition to that, whenever there's a general plan amendment or a zone change, the applicants are required to put up signage on the property. And that's the same standard citywide, and that was done here. I'm actually grateful to hear that the social media apps have helped spread the word. That's something that's becoming more and more common.
Thank you. What is the expected lot size for these parcels?
That'll be determined at the tract map stage in the future. However, based on the designation and zoning that they're asking for, the R1 minimum lot size would be 6,000 square feet, but it could go anywhere up to a quarter acre or even larger if they so desired.
Okay, thank you. And we talked about the traffic impact and what, what things are being done on current Canyon Road now to alleviate some of these problems that current residents have. It seems like we have several new developments that have gone in there, but nothing has been done on current Canyon Road and to address some of these issues, and this can't be the first time it's come up.
You know, we don't have our traffic engineer here with us tonight, and he would be the right person to answer that question, but I anticipate or I imagine that it's in the programmed improvements for the regional impact program. But we can come back and bring more information to you on that if you'd like.
And then I just wanted to address the R2, R1 issue. You know, we all like to have, you know, wide-open lands, and we like to have, you know, our little, single-family lots, but we need to provide rental housing for people in some areas. And I think it's better to disperse it among some of these tracts rather than having large groups of rental apartments and duplexes all in one little area. I kind of like the idea of kind of dividing them up, having a few homes and having a few duplexes. I think that makes those people that live in those duplexes feel more part of a neighborhood rather than a, than a plant, I guess, a planned housing unit or something of that nature. So, I'm not necessarily opposed to the R2 issue either, but I understand the developer's desire to try to make something that's acceptable in that area. So, that's all I had to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, I think we've covered a lot of bases, but I'd like to address the neighborhood, if you don't mind. I'd like to take this opportunity to help you learn a little bit more about your neighborhood. Jackie, could you pull up a land use or a zone map, either one of this area? That'll work. Land use will work too, but if you look at this, I want you, I don't think you're aware of something. Wait a minute, can you go to the, back to where we were, the tract map? Keep going, one more. Okay, those are existing tracts. What I'm looking at right now is 6962 and 6961. Okay, and can you go back to the zoning? Those are actual tracts? Question to you. What that is, that orange, yellow-orange section, that's all R2. So, I'm happy that the developer has said, hey, I'll just do R1 because there is enough R2 in that area. But I think you guys should be aware, it's already there, and it's huge. It's a lot bigger than what, what this developer was proposing. Since he's already in agreement, I mean, this is a no-brainer. As the commission, I'd be surprised if we would force the R2 at this point when he's already said, no, I don't need to do it. I don't need to do it. But I wanted to take this opportunity for you to really see the scope of what you already have. That's by right, that can be built, and there's nothing that can be done about it because they have property rights that give them that zoning as you have property rights. In saying that, I know we all speak a little bit of a different language, you're not used to this, but I want to ensure you that there are regulations in place that check the soil. I mean, nothing's perfect. I can't say, there's no guarantee in anything. There's no 100% guarantee in anything, but I want to offer assurances that the city of Bakersfield takes it very, very seriously to make sure that our rules and regulations are, that they are, they do the job, and that you're protected and our community's protected, and we grow in a logical and safe manner. One thing I wanted to also share with you, not just the R2, I'd like to share with you about how the roads work. There, I've said it before, and forgive me because I like saying it, there are no magic pots of money. If there were magic pots of money, we would have beautiful freeways and roads, and everything would be paid for, and we would have minimal taxes, but that's just not the way it is. So how your roads and your curbs and your gutters and your streetlights are paid by these developers, realistically, that's what happens. So every piece of property, every lot, every house that's built, the developers pay into, pay a fee, and it's a pretty good-sized fee. And from that pot of money that these developers pay into is when your roads get widened, when you get the streetlights, when you get your curbs and you get your gutters. Development's scary because you don't know what's coming. You don't, you can't, you can't see it, you can't touch it, but that's going to bring to you some of the things that you're worried about. You want curbs and gutters, you want sidewalks, you want crosswalks, you want streetlights, but that comes sadly, in our society, it comes after the development comes. So when you live in the path of growth, you suffer with dust. Trust me, I know, I lived in the path of growth. But it all comes, my house, I've lived there 27 years, and growth took that long to get to me, but now it's all around me, and I don't have dust so much anymore. It's really nice. So there are good things coming, and I want to offer these assurances that staff, I'm very proud of the city of Bakersfield and their staff and the diligence that they do every single day to protect and better our community. So thank you for letting me get on my soapbox, but I wanted to share with you some of the things that you might not know. Please feel free to reach out to the staff members, come talk to us afterwards if you have any questions too, on how it works, because it is frightening, and you want to protect your property values. And believe me, we are doing our very best to do that. So I'll get off my foot, soapbox. I see no other commissioner light, so I'll look for a motion. Staff, do you have a recommendation on how, if we would, if the commission's desire is R1 on this property, do you have a...
I do.
Thank you.
So under the recommendation portion on the first page of your staff report, all you would need to do is simply edit item three to read approving the zone change from RH to R1 on 40 acres. So you would be deleting the reference to the R2 zoning and approve R1 only on the entire site.
Somebody's going to make a motion, we're going to figure it out. Commissioner Wade really should do it, because he's got the iPad ready to go. Okay, he's going to do it.
I also didn't hear the recommendation just now, so I'm happy to second, I'm happy to second.
He's happy to second. Did you hear?
Anybody?
Okay, Commissioner Kater, you've been elected. Yeah.
Make the motion? I'm not sure what this is.
He wants you to read.
Would you like me to read the motion for you, Commissioner Kater?
And you'll say, "as stated."
Okay, so your motion would be the staff recommendation with an amendment to item three to read approving the zone change from RH residential holding to R1, one-family dwelling on 40 acres, and recommend the same to city council.
Ezra.
Commissioner Wade, you want a second?
And I second that.
There we go. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rednick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We're moving on to what, oh, he wants his iPad back, it's really nice. Very nice. Can we move on to item number seven, communications?
I just have one item. I'd like to thank and acknowledge Steve Esselman for making it through his first planning commission hearing. Good job, Steve. It's been a long day. He also did his first hearing as the Metropolitan Bakersfield Habitat Trust Administrator today, so it's been a long day of hearings for Steve.
He's holding his head. Do we have any commissioner comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you and good night.